Mr. Alexander, absent. Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Papo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Peltzer?
Aye.
Ms. Barbanen?
Aye.
Okay, Carrie, we are in open session at 7:30 PM.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I start the public comment, I just want to thank all our veterans who are here. We wouldn't be, have this free nation if it wasn't for you guys, so thank you very much. Thank you. At this time, the Board of Education... Ah, go ahead.
The mission statement. Through expectations of excellence and by providing equitable educational opportunities to empower each student, our graduates are prepared for college careers and serves contributing members of a dynamic global society.
Thank you, Jenny. At this time, the Board of Education opens the floor for public comment. The Board will receive public comment from an individual president this evening and has submitted a request to address the Board per the established procedures. Comments will be limited to three minutes unless you email me for five, in accordance with Board Policy 2230. We believe that our participants in the meeting desire the best outcomes for our students, families, and communities. As a reminder, this meeting is being livestreamed and will also be archived and available on the district website. Jenny, please.
First one is Latisa Jones.
Good evening, Board. My name is Latisa Jones and I'm the village administrator for the Village of Broadview. I'm here on behalf of Mayor Katrina Thompson and the Village of Broadview to share our concerns regarding the proposed property tax levy. In 2024, proviso township residents and business owners experienced a substantial increase in property tax reassessment as part of the evaluation conducted by the Cook County Assessors Office. These assessments led to a rise in property taxes, placing even greater burden on proviso township homeowners who already are dealing with some of the highest property taxes in Cook County. For many residents, meeting these new tax obligations has become increasingly challenging. With these unprecedented increases, many property owners in our township are now struggling to pay their taxes on time. Mayor Thompson urges the proviso township school District 209 Board to take a step back and consider a fair-reaching impact on this reassessment. Before approving any further tax increase, she asks that you look closely and examine district spending, identify areas of potential waste or inefficiencies. On behalf of the Village of Broadview and Mayor Katrina Thompson, we respectfully request that you approach this decision with careful consideration, keeping in mind the financial pressures facing our community. We ask that you critically evaluate the proposed increase and adopt an intentional approach to district spending that prioritizes our residents' well-being. I thank you for taking this consideration of the needs of our community and this important decision that's before me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Evans?
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
I'm speaking on behalf of Mayor Nathaniel Booker, who is attending the NLC conference for mayor, so I wanted to read some words. We do not need our taxes to go up in 2024, proviso township high school District 209. In 2024, proviso township residents and business owners received a record increase on our property tax reassessment that takes place every three years by the Cook County Assessors Office. In the north and northwest suburbs, taxes rose $213.7 million from $4.06 billion to $4.27 billion. Residential taxes increased $109.8 million, while taxes on commercial properties increased $103.1 million. Overall, the collection rate of taxes this year for the whole of the Chicago area for 2023 tax year was a bit more than 95%. But that was still the lowest collection rate in more than a decade, said Cook County Treasurer Maria Papas. Suburban homeowners already pay some of the highest property taxes in the county, and these increases will make paying those bills even more difficult. On Tuesday, November the 12th, 2024, there is a recommendation of a maximum tax levy increase from the superintendent that the Board of Education and proviso township school District 209 accepts the superintendent's recommendation to approve the 2024 levy in the amount of $745,934,896, a 3.6 increase, which is the maximum allowed over the 2023 tax extension. Some of our residents have seen their residential property tax increase by $4,400 over the previous year, said Mayor Nathaniel George Booker of Village of Maywood. These assessment increases make it impossible for even to consider raising the tax levy as we still see an increase in revenues already based on the new reassessment. More property owners in suburban Cook County have failed to pay property taxes on time after record increases. I ask that proviso township high school school District 209 take a step back and truly evaluate the new increases received from our region's reassessment, along with taking a deeper dive into financial waste and spending more approving another tax increase. In addition to that, he has some additional facts that he just wanted to list. I understand, three minutes. Property taxes, the property owners across Cook County are being asked to pay $706 million more in property taxes for a grand total of more than $18.3 billion. That's an increase of 4%, which was slightly below the 4.1% rate of inflation for 2023. Still, it marks at least the 30th straight year property taxes have gone up. Thank you for the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lundie Swiley?
Hi, Swiley.
Swiley, my apologies.
It's okay. Good evening to the Board.
Good evening.
I've come here as a representative with PLCCA and the Archbishop Dr. Clark Porter, discussing the evening school program that we have here at 209. We've had a pleasure working with Dr. Thomas and the staff for the evening schools in 209 since the inception of the program. The program is a much-needed tool in the community with us being boots on the ground. We see exactly what production is being done. We see exactly what services are being committed to. We, as a company, have a clear investment in the 209 district. Hope that you guys take clear consideration that Dr. Thomas and what she has done with the 209 evening school program should be evaluated and even increased with support. And so with that being said, I thank you for the time and I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sadie Turner?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I feel real brief. I just want to come speak. Good, I came up behind the young man. I also am grateful for Dr. Thomas as well, speaking on behalf of evening school and the district. There, of course, have been good and negative things as far as try to equal on the district. However, I will say that evening school and the programs that are offered and getting to the students through Dr. Thomas has definitely impacted the night school students, and I do want to continue to see it, you know, going forward, not only for my child or my kids, but others as well. I do see that there is change with the young women and young men that are going, you know, to the district and away in the district because there is life that is going on with our youth, and the programs are definitely needed. And I would also strongly suggest that it continues to pursue. Thank you.
Thank you. Edgar? I'm sorry, I can't read your last name.
I just wanted to speak on night school because it's a really positive thing, in my opinion, because I was able to graduate from it. And I've seen a lot of other students too. And I just wish that it continues because I was able to graduate and I thought I was going to be a super senior, but with night school, I was able to graduate on time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Howard Ray?
Good evening, the Board.
Good evening.
Yes, thoughts about the proposed property tax increase? I mean, there should be some other ways and means how to come about. Doing what needs to be done, first of all, we need to look at areas where, you know, maybe some expenses are there that are not really needed. And secondly, property tax might look good right now, but in the end, what you're doing is really decreasing your tax basis when you increase tax, property taxation. Because, fact is, when people are looking to move into a community, they're not looking to pay astronomical property taxes. And on top of that, they're paying high property taxes and the schools are not, I mean, it's not what they would expect. So, if you increase property taxes, you're losing in two ways for sure. People are not going to move into the, into the community and pay high property taxes if they can find someplace else to go. And on top of that, you will have people who are considering, leaving the community because of the high property taxation. I might be considering that myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Robbie Fiero? Fiero? Do you know? It is in Spanish. Could you maybe say it in Spanish? I just want to make sure of it.
No, it's Fiero.
Can he go up here and say in Spanish?
Yes, for sure.
He said, "Good evening, Board," and he was just here to thank Dr. Thomas for evening school. Thanks to Dr. Thomas, his son's able to graduate, and he continues to do well, and he thanks you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Good evening. I'm just here to thank Dr. Thomas, Edgar's mother. Marcela, um, graduated. Me, as his mother, I gave up on him. And I thought he was going to graduate, but we have Dr. Thomas, who was his mentor through this time, and thanks to her, he never gave up, and he graduated. And he's been so much good. So, thanks to Dr. Thomas.
Thank you. Sasha Taylor?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So, my name is Sasha, and I live here. And I've been in the district over in proviso township for like 11 years. And I'm not happy with taxes, neither, you know, neither happy with the school systems. I mean, I have a daughter that's 15. She's a sophomore. I have to send her to Christ of Kings, and she's out west. But I stay in this district. I really want my daughter to go in this district, and I want her to be at PMSA. But due to me missing the test date when she was in eighth grade, I felt very bad because, and then I was told that they was giving a test at Roosevelt Middle School because that's where she was going. So, I thought in my head she was giving a test. And so, when I found out she wasn't, I missed the deadline, and I was feeling like I'm here to see if I can have people, I'm requesting, and see if you all can have transfers coming in the community because I don't feel like, you know, we have to, being in the district and being in the community, where I have to go on the outside. I know she can go to proviso east or west, but west is where I'm located, but I prefer PMSA. I want my daughter to have the opportunity and a chance to get enrolled as a transfer here by being in the community and paying high taxes in the community. And also, I'm also requesting to see if those taxes can stay down, you know, instead of going up for 24 because it is hard living out here and with economy being so expensive, it's so hard, and I'm a single parent. And I'm also a permanent sub at Roosevelt Middle School too, so I'm just trying to make it as a single parent, but I do want to have my daughter to have the opportunity to come over here and be enrolled as a transfer, and she, you know, she's a sophomore. And like I said, she's being bullied, and I want to make sure she can at least find somewhere within the community where she's going to get her learning at, and she's a 3.5 GPA student. So, I want to have her to have that chance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to the board.
Do we not have school recognition? Is that Mr. Ashoff?
Good evening, Board. Mr. Peltzer, Mrs. Hickson, Secretary Barbanen, board members, community, thank you all for being here. We're going to get a little bit more information about this during the interim superintendent's report, but this is a special day today. Something myself, been with proviso for some time, something that I have wanted for each of the schools for quite some time. And I said we'll get some more information about this in a little bit. But the Illinois School Report Card.
Mr. Ashoff?
Yes, sir.
Can I interrupt you for one minute?
Absolutely.
Mr. Hall, I know you had sent me an email. You didn't sign it. No?
No.
Okay, never mind. Sorry. I knew you were going to speak, and I wanted to make sure that before public comment is over, I could do it. Sorry, Mr. Ashoff.
Yeah, no, no problem. Thank you. So, the, so Illinois, Illinois State Board of Education puts out a report card each year for schools. And that report card, much like a student's report card, we have letter grades, and we'll go into a little bit more detail about that. But the standard for most schools is to reach what they call commendable status. And that rating system has been in existence since 2018 with Illinois State Board of Education. Had various changes throughout the years of education, but to date, since 2018, we have never had each of our schools be at least at that commendable status. This year, for the 23-24 school year, that just got published at the end of October, I am proud to say that each of our schools, proviso east, proviso west, and proviso math and science academies are commendable schools. So, as a small, small token for the immense amount of work, because this is no small feat, from the student's performance, from our teachers in the classroom, to our administrators that are standing here. An immense amount of hard work got into each of those ratings. And as a small token, presenting awards to each of our schools for that and asking that any administrators of each of those schools come up and receive this award on behalf of the school. So, first, in no particular order, I have proviso west, and I believe we have Dr. Carson, Ms. Jones, and Ms. Martinez present today. Firstly, the award reads, "Award to proviso west for achieving commendable status." In the 2024 Illinois State Report Card, this working vision honors the collective efforts of the school community to support academic growth and student achievement across key performance areas.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, sure. And I think, I think it's probably too forgetful for Bonnie up here, co-interim superintendent at the time.
All right, this way. One, two, three. All right, great job.
It was, come on. All right. And next, we have proviso math and science academy, again, for its award of commendable status. And in present, we have Dr. Mason, and I'm also going to call Dr. Walker up here, who is also part of that administrative team. On the award itself, awarded to proviso math and science academy for earning the commendable designation in the 2024 Illinois State Report Card. This award recognizes the school's ongoing commitment to academic excellence, student success, and continuous improvement.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
All right, right this way. One, two, three. Okay, got it.
I believe Mr. Gao's principal, PMSA, is watching virtually, so thank you for her work. She was unable to be in attendance. She's dealing with a personal matter right now. All right, and last, we have Mr. Hall, and I think I saw at least Dr. Lang present. All right, so last year, this one is special because I, I'll always be a proviso pirate at heart, sorry, Panthers and Pythons. But proviso east here, again, its status of commendable status, if you were able to come to the awards night last Friday, was a special, special, special day. So, presented in recognition of proviso east high school's outstanding academic progress and dedication to student success. This designation reflects the hard work and commitment of the students, staff, and community achieving a commendable rating for the first time for the 2024 school year.
All right, last one. One, two, three. All right.
Mr. Bennett? Let's lock back into our computer here. Okay, and as I said, we'll go into a little bit more detail about specifically those designations and what kind of led us and got us to that distinction for each of those schools. And then a little bit more celebration during that time. So, again, my name is Alexander Ashoff. I'm interim superintendent for proviso township high schools. And for this report, I'm going to start with a financial update. And thank you to the community that came out about tax levy, but we have Dr. Hill here to go a little bit more into detail about several items in our business. I'll just start now.
Good evening, Board. This evening, we will present the following. The tax levy presentation will be presented by Ms. DeRosi. We have the treasurer's report and the bill list, which will be presented by our coordinator of accounting and finance, Ms. Turner. And then we will have a press presentation by Dr. Walker. So, I will bring Ms. DeRosi up at this time from Eliminate Consulting to speak more on the tax levy.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Good evening, Board. I'm here to give the final presentation of your 2024 tax levy and to answer any questions. On October 8th, the Board received and listened to the tentative levy be presented at the Board meeting. None of the numbers have changed in this presentation, but I am going to provide a little more information in certain areas to get into a little more detail. Ultimately, the tax levy needs to be filed with the county clerk prior to December 31st. So, there's three major factors to consider when making a levy decision. The first is what is the impact of the decision on the long-term financial condition of the district? What is the impact of the decision on the long-term quality of educational services in the schools? And the third one is what is going to be the impact on our buildings? This slide shows the historical CPI, which is the rate of inflation, which is what's used to determine how much taxing bodies can increase their levy by year over year. This shows the history of tax caps in Illinois since 1993. You can see the last three years, inflation is as high as it's been during this time period. The average CPI over the last 20 years was about 2.2%. But you can see in 2022, it was 7%. 2023, it was 6.5, and 2024, it's 3.4. Now, because we're in Cook County, the most that we can request as an increase on our tax levy is 5%. So, the 5% threshold was used in 2022 and 2023. When you look at the grand scheme of the last 20 years, that average increase was a little over 2% each year. Next, it's important to understand the breakdown of revenues and how the tax levy impacts proviso District 209. Two-thirds of every dollar that the school district receives comes from this tax levy. It's the primary source of income, and those dollars are what allow you to operate your business, which is educating students. This slide shows a breakdown of the 2023 tax extension versus the 2024 levy request. As I mentioned, the district is able As I mentioned, the district is able to increase the prior-year levy extension by the prior year's rate of inflation, which in this case is 3.4%. Here's a breakdown of the levy request by fund. I think it's important to note that there's only three funds that are levying for over $1 million. And those are the three funds that are used for the primary school operations. The district is proposing a levy of almost $58 million in its education fund. The education fund is the fund that's used to pay teachers and paraprofessionals and to buy textbooks and laptops and things for the classroom. There's a $12 million levy request for the operations and maintenance fund. That's what we use to pay our utility bills, to upkeep our buildings, fix our roofs, things like that. And lastly, there's a $4.5 million levy request for the transportation fund, which is self-explanatory. That's the money that's being used to transport the kids to school and school-related activities. I want to talk about how is this going to impact the taxpayer in District 209? It was mentioned a couple times earlier today that Cook County every three years reassesses the value of the properties within one-third of the county. They're on a three-year cycle. This most recent reassessment poses significant burden and an increase of the tax bill from commercial properties over to residential. When you think about the last three years, if you follow the real estate market or the value of your house, or if you know anybody who moved and you see the prices that houses have been increasing at a tremendous rate over the past three years, and factor that into the fact that over the last three years, a lot of commercial properties and businesses have been struggling, maybe not making as much revenue as they had prior to COVID, and a lot of businesses had even shut down. So when you factor those two things into consideration, there is a significant shift of taxes that need to be paid in Cook County from the businesses to the residential property owners. When the school district levies for money to operate the district, it's asking for, let's talk about last year, a 5% increase of property tax revenues versus the prior year. That doesn't mean that each individual property tax, each individual property owner is paying exactly 5% more than the previous year. All it means is that the aggregate dollars that are collected by the school district are 5% higher than they were the previous year. The rest is calculated by the county, and I mentioned there was a significant shift to the residential properties. So we took a look at this 3.4% increase to the 2024 levy, and we just said, what is the impact to a $300,000 market value homeowner? I'm going to read through every bullet point because I think they're all important. The tax extension for the limited funds will increase 3.4% versus the prior year. The tax extensions for the bond fund will remain flat versus the prior year. The total estimated annual increase to the portion of the tax bill due to Proviso Township High School 209 will be approximately $58 for the entire year, higher than last year. $4.84 per month. Now, that's just the portion of the bill that goes to the high school. Obviously, there's other municipalities that affect the taxes that you're paying for your house. But this specific tax levy to a $300,000 property owner will be about a $58 increase in the property tax bill versus last year. And then homes with valuations greater or less than this $300,000 will increase or decrease proportionately. Lastly, this report is just new compliance for the Illinois State Board of Education. When you present the levy, you need to show historical fund balances in your education operations and maintenance fund and your transportation fund. The district and all three funds at the end of last year had a little under $38 million in reserves. These are the three funds that Proviso 209 and almost every single district across the state, these are the three highest funds. The expenses in these funds are used to operate the school district. So with that being said, are there any questions?
Actually, go back a few slides, if you could. I need to make some... One more. Right there. So here's where we've heard a lot of people speak tonight, and I think here's where we're coming up with an issue because it seems like a lot of the concerns are based on misinformation. We're looking at our levy request. It's just over $75 million. And yet, I believe what Mayor Booker's representative, and actually, I'm going to go by Mayor Booker's email to all of the board members. He's talking about a 3.6 increase on $745 million. I think he accidentally put maybe an extra digit in there because it's $670 million more than what we're requesting. So I think that's where maybe some of this information is coming from, perhaps this typo. When you break it down to $58 per household in taxes, and that will increase or decrease based on the value of a home, and you said that your estimate was based on a $300,000 home. Well, you know, our houses aren't maybe worth that much in depending on what area you are in. Mine wasn't. So we'll pay less or more depending on what your house is worth, right? So I think that's where some of the concern is coming in. When you look at $745 million, that's pretty crazy. I'm not sure we have that much taxable in Proviso Township at all to begin with. But when we correct that typo and we look at the actual numbers that you provided for us here, $75 million is a lot more in line with basically what we've gotten in the years past. It's not a large increase. So thank you for spelling that out, bullet point. I just want people to be really clear because people are concerned. I would be concerned too if it were over $700 million. It's not. Thank you.
I also think it's important to point out that, I mean, taxes did go up quite a bit, but that's not because Proviso took that money. That was a reassessment from right at, that happens every three years. So, you know, we all took a hit in Proviso with those rates. But that was not, all of that money didn't go to us because of a tax levy.
Correct, and your levy was 5% last year. Different municipalities probably did 5%, some might have varied. But there's going to be property owners that had maybe even a 10% increase versus what they paid last year because of the reassessment. But there's also, but then on the other side, some of these businesses might have had flat taxes or even a decrease because of how everything shifted. So again, it's important to note that this 3.4% levy increase does not mean that we're asking, we're going to receive exactly 3.4% more from every single taxpayer in the entire tax base. It means that we're going to receive 3.4% more than that $73,438,000 number that we received from the last exception.
Let me ask you this. So the $300,000 market value, are they talking about the bill? I mean, the statement we get from the Cook County assessor, whether they give value to our homes, is that, it's not real estate market value? It's a different value?
It's the value that the county gives to your home.
So it's what the assessor gives to your home, which is really not even $300. Most of us in Proviso. Okay, thank you. So it's not the real estate market sale of homes, it's what the county assessor gives?
Right, and there's a variety of factors that they use.
Two comments or two questions. One, if we can go back to the breakdown of revenues, that pie chart, just want to stress something. In fiscal year '24, we had access to, well, I guess in fiscal year '24, '25, we had access to ESAR funds, right? ESAR free funds. Those are no longer available as of September, right?
That is correct. September 30th was the last date of application.
And do you know how much of an impact that had? There was several million dollars worth of federal funding, correct?
That is correct. On average, since I've been here, the ESAR funding was well over $3 million. So one year was $2 million, another year was $3. So if you take that into consideration, that's a significant amount of funding. Let's say summer school, for example. All our summer school positions, for the most part, came from ESAR funding. This year, we have to really look at a funding source because it would have to come from general funds because we can't take it from ESAR anymore because ESAR does not exist. So we have to reallocate how we will be funding the summer school or look at some modifications in reference to positions and things of that nature.
Got it. Thank you. And then the second thing is, it's important to note that our tax bill is a combination of not only the school districts, right? The high school, local school, but also the municipalities, right? Your township, for example, may raise taxes by 5%, 4.2% and whatnot. That also plays into the mix of property taxes. So I just want to stress that, that it's not only this body, it's also your township. So, thank you.
I have a question. Where is the report on new revenue that is coming to the district based on the reassessment of property value? Where's that report?
So the reassessment doesn't necessarily generate new dollars for the district. It generates how the property tax bills are split up, how the property tax values are calculated.
So do you know what our, this community, new revenues will be based on increases?
You would receive about $2.5 million in new revenues.
What's your name again?
Rob Rossi.
Oh, you're the sign?
Yes.
So the board package shows $745 million. Correct, so that needs to be clarified. So it was not Mayor Booker just missing a number.
So you said it shows on the board package, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So let the public understand that's what it stated?
Yeah, the board package states that the Board of Education of Proviso Township High School District 209 accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve the 2024 levy in the amount of $745,934,800.
Oh, okay, and that's what's out in the public?
Thank you. I think that's a correction that needs to be made so that we can, because that increases it just astronomically and it's not factual. Thank you.
And then it is, on that, on that, it is important to note that if the district were to levy for more than 5% of the prior year's extension, the district would be required to hold the day truth and taxation hearing one month prior to the levy being approved. And the district is not going over that 5% cap, and there was no truth and taxation hearing.
That's good news, right? Anyone question, boy? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I will bring up Ms. Turner. She will present the treasures report and the bill list. And then following Ms. Turner will be Dr. Walker, and he will present a grant presentation.
Good evening, Board members, staff, and community. My name is Cassandra Turner, and I am going to be presenting this October's treasury report. As you can see from the month of October, this includes four months of data. We received $52,61,821 in revenue, which is about 43% of what was budgeted. If you come down to our expenditures, we're at $37,491,606, which is only 31% of our expenditures. So at this pace, we're doing great. As long as we stay on this steady pace of our revenues exceeding our expenditures, we're looking to have a good final year. Next, we will ask that you, the bill list is attached for your review. Do you have any questions?
I mostly just have a comment after Mr. Ashoff. I saw that we were purchasing like skinned cats and all these weird exciting like science things for PMSA. And I have heard that, at least at East, that they were not able to fund frogs for their science classes. So I just wanted, if you could, to look into making sure equity in our science, experimental animals to work on.
Yeah, that's, I hadn't heard that, but I know that Dr. Hill worked very hard with each of the schools to increase the budgets for each of the schools to purchase additional educational supplies for this school year.
I think it came up on Bring Your Parent to School Day. I remember I was talking about science things like dissecting frogs and, you know, pig embryos and all that fun stuff. And they said that wasn't in their curriculum because it wasn't in the budget.
As a former science teacher and department chair of Proviso East, we had an issue purchasing educational services.
Getting cats on the bill list this time, I was like, oh.
And then if they have any special requests, they can always just come to the business office, and we've been very accommodating.
Thank you.
Dr. Hill?
At this time, I will present Dr. Walker. And so we have two action items. Before Dr. Walker comes, it will be the approval of the bill list and then the approval of the FY '24 tax levy. Dr. Walker.
Good evening, the SWAT years, members of the board, staff, and members of the community. Staff, I'll be presenting the grant presentation. As you know, that being a Title I school means receiving federal funds to supplement the school's existing programs. These dollars are used for identifying students experiencing academic difficulties and providing timely assistance to help students meet state-challenging content standards. Also, the purchasing of supplemental staff, programs, and materials and supplies as needed. As you'll see in review, for the '25 fiscal year, in total, we have an allocation of about $1.9 million. For Title I, $1.5 million. For Title II, $171,000. For Title IV, $100,550. For after-school programming, $127,575. For school improvement efforts, $48,090. And for school graphics expansion program, we just qualified for in the amount of $10,000. You see Title I allocations of $1.1 million for instructional supports, supplies, and materials. Additional instructional supplies and materials will be provided in the amount of about $23,000. Parental engagement, which we find is very much so important, even having a resource at each one of our schools to engage their families is definitely important in the amount of $199,743. Our homeless and neglected student allocation of $4,500. And for our non-public schools, of $114,973. Our non-public schools consist of Trinity High School, Christ the King, and Walter Christian. Our Title II allocations, you'll see, we want to provide robust professional development opportunities for our staff in the amount of $38,500. You'll see retention of effective teachers in the amount of $76,764. We think it's definitely important to keep our teachers here. We think it's definitely important to keep our teachers here and to provide them with opportunities to grow here in the district so that they can remain. We have association fees of the amount of, uh, five thousand dollars. And for our recruitment of qualified teachers in the amount of twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars, along with our non-public allocation of about twenty-nine thousand. Our Title IV allocation is based on well and healthy, well-rounded students. We have an allocation of forty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And that's academic programming which extends beyond the classroom. Opportunities outside of the school day, which will also extend into summer school to give our students a holistic educational experience. Also for safe and healthy stu- students and schools, an allocation of twenty-three thousand. And that's geared toward climate and culture within our buildings. That's programs that focus on SEL and conflict resolution skills. We have technology allocation with our teachers that can take part in professional development and training in state, um, which they can bring back that information that they learn so that they can provide our students with a quality education and 21st century type of education, which will be personalized experiences for our students using technology. We have another allocation of seventeen thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars for our non-public schools to provide well-rounded education for their students as well. After-school program, which we feel is definitely, uh, important. Um, so the investment that we definitely need to make with our students, which provides them opportunities after school to receive tutoring or, um, other extracurricular programming in the amount of fifty-three thousand. Those benefits for those staff members that will be working after school with our students throughout the course of the year are in the amount of five thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Professional learning opportunities for our students in the amount of nine thousand. And supplemental materials for after-school program in the amount of about thirteen thousand. Another educational resource geared for our students in the amount of forty thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. For our school improvement grant, in the amount of about forty-eight thousand, you see half of that amount is designated for instructional coaching using a vendor that has been vetted by Illinois State Board of Education to provide, um, data analysis for different schools. Um, we have benefits for PD in the amount of about twenty-three hundred dollars and salaries for staff that take part in professional development opportunities at the conclusion of the academic day in the amount of eighteen thousand. You'll see that instructional supplies for school improvement efforts in the amount of thirty-six, five dollars. Lastly, we have the school breakfast grant, which we qualify for this year in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Uh, marketing, um, in the amount of about twenty-eight hundred dollars. Just to make it known to our students across the district, we want more students in safety park in, um, our breakfast programming. More opportunities for students, we want to hear more student voice. We have food and storage containers in the amount of forty-three, like four thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars so that we can ensure that we're providing, um, fresh breakfast options for our students that are secure, um, so that we keep our students coming, so that we have adequate resources in each of our buildings. Lastly, we have equipment and supplies in the amount of about two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Um, again, that will assist in some of the breakfast options available for our students across. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, yes. This concludes the, uh, business office updates. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Hill, Ms. Turner and Dr. Walker. Appreciate it. Alright, we got a special day coming up on November fifteenth. So November fifteenth, for those who don't know, is School Board Member Day. So just wanted to say thank you to our Board of Education, celebrate the dedication of the Proviso Township District 209 Board of Education and your commitment and leadership. I know it is a, sometimes a very difficult, uh, job and sometimes a very rewarding job. So thank you very, very much for your commitment to, uh, Proviso Township. Alright, to get some detail here about, uh, the awards that were provided to each of our schools. Again, the sum of designations come out every year, uh, and that is the report card for each of the schools. Report cards themselves, uh, you can kind of look at that slice of the pie, are kind of denoted by these eight different indicators. Uh, they range from the largest indicator being the graduation rate, which is half of that, that's fifty percent of the overall sum of designation, uh, to smaller indicators like our English language learner progress proficiency or science proficiency at five percent. So gonna kind of hit on some of those highlights, uh, today. And for next board meeting, to kind of go into a little bit more detail around that English language learner, uh, English language learner progress proficiency. And that, you'll see that in the December, uh, board meeting. So as we discussed here, we have never, in Proviso Township history, had three commendable schools. The annual sum of designations themselves, you can see that they range, uh, from bottom to top here. Uh, to kind of go over a little bit to give some context, again, to the significance of this and the importance that each of our schools have reached this designation. So at the bottom here, intensive support. Uh, intensive support means that schools at the bottom five percent or the bottom five percent performing in those indicators. And they've done that continuously for four years. Again, those designations started in 2018. In those four years, minus 2021 because of COVID stuff, we haven't had one of our schools be in that comprehensive, uh, range. So if you are comprehensive for four years, that's where you line yourself as what they call, uh, intensive support. Comprehensive is, again, that performance where that school is at the bottom five percent of schools. Targeted, where we've had one of our schools last year and the year prior to that, uh, is where at least one group is performing below that all-students group of the lowest five percent of schools. So last year, for instance, we were targeted with Proviso East because of our students identified as students with disabilities. Their graduation rate was significantly lower and is lower than those, uh, bottom five percent of schools, which landed for Proviso East in the targeted status, which they greatly increased. And we can see now that that rating is raised to commendable. So commendable is where you have no underperforming students, below those all-student groups, the lowest five percent. And then the highest rating at the top ten percent of schools is exemplary. So let's dive into some details and just kind of look at those a little bit more closely. And for the historic context, going back from the 2020 all the way to current, right now. You can kind of see going from the top and going left to right here. In 2020, Proviso East was comprehensive. Uh, our administrative team kind of got put together in that 2021 timeframe where that designation increased, though it was kind of carried over in 2021, but the states didn't put out designations. Got to raise it targeted, targeted, and then finally this year, uh, Proviso East is commendable. Proviso West has maintained that commendable status, um, each of those years. And PMSA, though has been ranked exemplary in the past and even a blue ribbon award winner, uh, has been commendable, uh, the past three years. But this is the first time in Proviso Township history where all three of our schools have reached that designation of commendable. I'm gonna, is that approximately? So since twenty, this designation system has been out since 2018. The states have different designations, but this structure as it is, has existed since 2018. So this is a remarkable accomplishment, accomplishment, and that's something that does happen overnight. And there's a series of teachers that have come through, students that have come through, because all of that work, we've got about six hundred employees and I guarantee you that each one of those employees had a hand, um, in this. And it's all forty-five hundred of our students, even though those students may be being serviced by another, uh, district placement school. All of those students are part of that Proviso Township. And this here marks that great accomplishment and setting those goals moving forward of each of our schools reaching that exemplary status. So if we take a look at that, uh, range, I think if you read some of these articles, you were hearing that, for instance, Proviso East went from that bottom five percent. You can see now with that sum of designation rating, they are basically right in the middle there, forty-seven, at that forty-seventh percentile, if you will. Showing the significance of going from the bottom five percent now to the middle of the pack there is no small feat. Again, incredible amount of work went in by our teachers, went in by our students and went in with our administrative team, uh, that currently has existed, uh, under Principal Hall, who has moved that school up from what was being known as that intensive support to, uh, then it was com- comprehensive to targeted and now commendable. So again, Principal Hall.
Re-level.
Yes, congratulations. Proviso West, you can see, if I just kind of flip back and forth, they're right there in line, they're at the forty-sixth percentile. And all of that work, Proviso West has maintained that commendable status. Again, that is no small feat on their part, too, under Principal Martinez. So again, we have a great deal to thank for her hard work and her administrative team, um, that has been put together of reaching this status here as commendable. And lastly, if you kind of take a look at Proviso Math and Science Academy, I want you to look at how close this school was to reaching that exemplary mark. Incredibly close. So we'll kind of look at some of those, a few of those indicators, those, those larger ones here. Because having access to that information and being able to make targeted decisions about our students and where our students need the most support is again the key to cracking that information of how you play school and knowing where those supports are needed and how we can get our school, in this instance, to exemplary. And I know that Proviso East and Proviso West will be shortly behind, uh, the Math and Science Academy. So taking a look at the largest piece of the pie, uh, is our graduation rate. And that is fifty percent of the sum of designation. Looking now in the 2024, alright, that last column there of where Proviso East was at eighty-five percent of students. And though we'll hear from each of the principals that the students that are in their building, that percentage is higher for the students in their building. We also recognize we have a large population of students in out-of-district placement and also students that stay in program up to the age of twenty-one, but maybe twenty-two. And Ms. Fleming always has to correct me if you're watching, Ms. Fleming, thank you. Uh, but also kind of weighs into that factor that where the students at East and West, um, that are there, the percentage of those students that graduate opposed to our students that are being served as, uh, by out-of-district placement. But still information that we watch, um, at our level. But seeing those graduation rates rise for East, though it slightly did, uh, go down for West and then slightly up, uh, for the Math and Science Academy, but getting back close to that one hundred percent that they were in 2021. But showing that immense growth, uh, here from 2021 to 2024, where again, Proviso East grew, uh, by fourteen percent, which again is huge on that graduation rate and what we're doing, uh, for our students and with our students and supporting their needs and getting them across that line to fulfill those graduation requirements. When we take a look at the next largest piece would be your English Language Arts or ELA proficiency and your math proficiency. Each of those are seven point five percent of the sum of designation. Also at the bottom there, that state average, if you kind of look at the, the larger picture there. Again, seeing each, um, of our schools at East and West making an increase. Uh, nearly five percent in Proviso East, uh, two percent at West. And though our numbers slightly did go down at, at PMSA for our ELA proficiency. But, uh, PMSA again was above that state average, uh, where the state was at thirty-one. The Math and Science Academy was at forty point seven. On math side, and though East and West are in those single-digit areas, we did see growth. And, uh, PMSA did slightly go down from thirty-eight to thirty-five. But again, still higher than that state average there. We're recognizing the, the need for increasing our proficiency in math. Lastly here, the larger chunk of the pie that we'll focus on tonight is just that chronic absenteeism. Uh, community, if you're listening and parents that are still here, we, we desperately need our students in class. And having those regular conversations and regularly checking power school to see if students are tardy or if they are absent. And chronic absenteeism is when you miss ten percent more, uh, of those school days. So if there's a hundred and seventy-six school days, these students miss eighteen or more days to be labeled as, as chronically absent. So if a student misses more than eighteen days and they're, they're, you know, from start to finish, we're here. You can see these numbers are incredibly high, though they did decrease, uh, from last year uh, for each of our schools. Still with East coming in at fifty-seven percent, West at seventy-five percent, and PMSA at twenty-four. Uh, these, these are alarming numbers. Uh, we want to increase our communication around this and communicate to our parents uh, and our students about the value and the importance of being in school. I, I believe if we can get these numbers way down and get our students in class and learning, again, that is going to be one of those keys of getting each of our schools to that exemplary status where I know each of those dual, schools can achieve. Getting them in school and teaching will increase those scores. But these numbers here reflect it, it is, it is alarming that a large percentage of our students are missing more than eighteen days of school each school year. Alright, next, I believe I saw Ms. Benbrook. Uh, but before I, I go to her, I just want to see if there's any questions around any of those indicators. Again, only going over a couple of those tonight. Ms. Benbrook?
Mr. Ashop. Yes, Mr. Ashop. One quick question. So for the math proficiency, for PMSA, there's an anomaly where it goes from thirty-nine to fifty percent.
Yes, sir.
Twenty-two, then it drops back down to, to what do we attribute that anomaly?
I, the, the, uh, this response here would just be COVID, right? Uh, I, I think everyone's kind of thinking that, and you can hear some murmurings there. But, uh, yeah, looking, looking at that and trying to get those numbers, uh, back up to that pre-COVID is absolutely the goal in working with our administrative team, uh, and isolating that. We know, again, this is PSAT, um, information and that, or SAT information, I'm sorry. And that the state is making that switch over to the ACT. So doing everything we can at the building and district level to support our students in successfully making that transition over to an now unfamiliar test that they haven't seen the past three years. Uh, so we've put a number of things as far as, uh, a practice test and a number of supplemental materials uh, to make sure that we're getting that support to our students of this different test. Thank you. Anything else? Alright, so briefly call up, uh, Ms. Benbrook to discuss, um, and actually, I mean, okay, thank you.
Hello, good evening, board members.
Good evening.
I am here to present on behalf of the IT and the Communications Department. We are presenting a proposal regarding our website and communications platform. That would be, um, our partnership with Final Site. Thank you. Um, this is our district website management system. Our goal is to ultimately approve a longer-term contract with them so that we can continue to work with Final Site's team. Uh, they bought Blackboard, which is what our website is. And in the process of them purchasing, uh, Blackboard, they're offering a lot of free setups and incentives, um, incentives to work with them, to continue contracts with them in order to improve and update our website, continue to use and enhance our communications through their, um, variety of apps that they provide as well. So ultimately, they're looking to approve a longer-term contract with them. This would help us, again, help us, uh, update our overall website, continue to streamline the communications. And also this would obviously lock in pricing for us. And we are looking to approve a five-year contract. And we also asked them to put in a stipulation that we would provide an ID to notify us if we should change our minds within that timeframe. And bullet point three is the price breakdown over the next, that five-year term. Do we have any questions?
So this will fix the website and the staff directory that is completely outdated?
Yes, yes. I'm very excited and hoping to continue to work with them. I really, really love to update and give our website a fresh look. There's a lot of outdated information and I believe extending this contract will allow us to continue to enhance and improve our website as it is and also allow us to provide training to other people within the buildings as well, to appoint roles, to help assist with editing, um, streamline the processes for communication, make sure we're training more and more people, admins, principals, so that they can continue to send communications on their behalf of their schools as well.
Thank you. So what was the contract prior to this five years you're asking for?
I believe, and I might need some assistance from Mr. Ashop, or, um, Mr. Wong, to provide this information as well. I believe we went, um, month, uh, excuse me, year by year. I believe we went month, or excuse me, year by year. So we were hoping to extend a longer contract with them so that we can lock in a stable price point with them.
So will this party be keeping the website updated or will you be keeping the website updated?
They will help us overhaul the entire website so that we can continue to keep it updated. And again, we would allow us to train and appoint more people within the building so that they can help maintain and keep their information for each individual site as well. So ultimately, we're looking for their assistance to freshen it up and allow us to better easily update the information because there is a lot of outdated information.
What role do you play with the website?
I currently oversee it right now. We did have our digital media specialist who, that was a sole responsibility of them. So right now, any sort of information that needs to go on the website usually runs through me.
Is who you oversee, you know?
The digital media specialist position is currently big and we are looking to fill that soon. Any other questions for the board? Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, so as we continue through various action items, next action we're discussing is additional course. So we've got two additional courses. You'll see one is the Advanced Placement African American Studies. So senior action item there, we have a number of individuals attended conference. This is a great opportunity for our grade twelve students at each of our campuses that will satisfy our Black History graduation requirement. This is adding additional AP coursework to our academic programs and course catalog. And we have a number of units of study here that explore key topics that extend from early African kingdoms to ongoing challenges and achievements of the contemporary era. The next course that we're looking at adding is a career exploration course. So as we begin to expand our career technical education in early college department, we identified an opportunity for our ninth graders to begin to kind of explore different careers and tie that in with our potential pathways that we have and increasing that opportunities to kind of give some more information to our freshman students to make a better and more informed choice about what career pathway that they want to choose. So if you recall, we have had one student now, our first student, achieve that career, that college and career pathway endorsement in criminal justice that the board recognized. And looking to, now that we have identified pathways, offering an opportunity for students to kind of make a more informed decision about what pathway they want to kind of focus in on. So we have a number of action items here on the consent agenda. The Nehemiah Community Project was an information item last month. Didn't go into a whole lot of detail there, but looking to continue that partnership for our evening school support. And again, thank you to the community and the number of individuals that spoke out in support of that evening school program. So that would be in the tune of forty-five thousand dollars for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We have an item that we discussed in closed session for an MOA, looking at another MOA with a photography club that is about that requirement as it is outlined in the collective bargain agreement for our teachers. We just heard from Ms. Vandenberg speak about Final Site and renewing that with that five-year term of total of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars roughly. And that clause that if we choose to cancel, we have that ninety-day clause that we can. And then the two course additions there, those are the items on the consent agenda. Additional action items we have is our graduation requirement at Proviso East and Proviso West. This was an information item last month, tweaked it just slightly, but as you recall, we did approve Proviso East and Proviso West for four years of math, starting with the class of twenty-twenty-nine. With that addition, additional math course required, looking at taking the graduation, the amount of credits to graduate at Proviso East and Proviso West from then twenty-two to twenty-three with that additional mandated course. And that will begin with that class of twenty-twenty-nine. So students, if you're listening, that's not starting now. That's starting when we add that fourth year of math to the graduation requirement for the class of twenty-twenty-nine. So the other action items up for the board, we have District Eighty-Nine Education Foundation donation in the tune of ten thousand dollars with plans for positive behavior incentives for a school store at Proviso East. And then that graduation requirement that we talked about in addition to the Press Plus updates that again were on first and second reading and now up for action item tonight. Moving then now to additional information items. So as we continue to look to our scheduling, our master scheduling for the following school year, their twenty-five, twenty-six school year, we always update our academic programs and course catalog. So just another fine-tuning of that as we are moving into that scheduling season. For those that are listening that may be in one of our foundational middle schools, our counselors are going to be coming out soon to your school to help you pick out your courses as a current eighth grader coming to one of our schools as a ninth grader. So just some additional updates to that course catalog there. We're looking forward to summer school as well. So just in the beginning stages of that planning for summer school. So it's just an information item tonight, just kind of taking a look at that. Some points of reference here, we're looking at again credit recovery, original credit enrichment. One item that did come up in discussion with the business office, we do need to identify a funding source. As we heard, that idea of those S R dollars were used as a funding source for summer school last year in addition to some title funds that you heard Dr. Walker speak about. Right now, the way that those monies are allocated, we need to find a different funding source and most likely it would be local funds. So on this information item, if there is discussion, possibly looking at a revenue source of that. Again, we have historically not charged for summer school. I think we just had a late registration if they didn't register by that. It is just concerning looking at the cost, the potential cost, and we'll fine-tune that based on need and how many students we are projecting. But that estimated cost of roughly a hundred thousand dollars for approximately a hundred and fifty-six employees. And knowing that that will be on local funds is concerning. So we want to make sure that we are closely looking at that and working closely with Dr. Hill and the business office to identify a funding source for that.
Mr. Asher, I have a question. So I know last year for summer school, it was, I know it was always an issue with summer school. A lot of kids sign up, but they don't, did we take that into consideration for this, a hundred thousand for this following year?
I think that's something that we should absolutely look at to see the number of students that signed up versus our attendance counts. And that's something that we kind of always are watching. So looking back at that information to ensure that and how many employees we had versus how many needed, that's under constant.
Yeah, if I recall the board number, I don't know if it was you that learned two of the schools and it was only two, three students per classroom. If we're spending this kind of money and it's now coming out of an education fund, we really need to do a cost analysis versus attendance of these students and what we're paying out to these.
I absolutely agree, and I can hear my partner behind me agreeing with that sentiment. Yes, sir, I do agree. And before anything goes to action there, we will closely look at that and provide all of that information to the board to make sure that that is an educated decision on board action. Next, on a couple items in our CTE and early college department. So we're continuing to look at those offerings of our dual enrollment and dual degree. So just kind of again informing the board about those investments for our students. So on the dual enrollment side, looking at approximate costs of nine-five thousand dollars for approximately a hundred and twenty students. That dual degree program, so dual enrollment for those, we've had some great community outreach with that in our last parent and community engagement meeting under Secretary Barbara Hen. We had Dr. Brandon and members from Triton come and speak to the community. That dual enrollment side is where they are students of Proviso, that they're attending courses at Triton and they get credit, both Triton credit and Proviso credit. Versus the dual degree, those students start their junior year and they attend classes solely at Triton, but get Triton credit and Proviso credit. So their own dual degree is they're only attending classes at Triton for both junior and senior year. Right now, currently we have eight students in that dual degree program. We are looking to expand that to twenty-one students. That would be seven students from each of our three schools. Looking for a total of twenty-nine students with an approximate cost of forty-six thousand six hundred dollars. Last item is our trucking voucher meal cards. So those students that are on campus, making sure that lunch is provided because we do provide lunch for all of our students. So making sure that the students that are at Triton also get fed while they're on Triton's campus. So again, those are just information items for you or for your information tonight. Next, I believe I have Mr. Taylor here to talk about.
Before we look at item fifteen, that's the District Eighty-Nine Education Foundation donation. So the board policy that is in the board packet, right, that was posted.
Yep.
This donation acceptance is in direct violation of our policy, right? So can you walk us through why this is not to be accepted?
Yes, you're saying against board policy and I think there's several items there for.
I can read them out loud. So Board Policy Eighty gives to the district states that the Board of Education appreciates gifts from any education foundation, other entities, individuals, all gifts must adhere to the following. One, it has to be accepted by the board or less than two thousand dollars in value the superintendent or designated. Individuals should obtain a pre-acceptance commitment before identifying the district and school or school program or activity as a beneficiary in any fundraising attempt, including without limitation, any internet fundraising attempt. Two, be given without a stated purpose or with a purpose deemed by the party of authority to accept the gift to be compatible with the board's educational objectives and policy. So my concern is that this is, I think it's a wonderful idea, I really do. I think I've even mentioned it to Mr. Hall, probably several times when I was on the pack, that having a spirit store is a great idea. However, the donation shouldn't come with any kind of stipulations. And this specifically is stipulating exactly what it should be, the donation should be used for and who would run that. And so I have just questions about how this would come to be when none of those things should be attached to a very well-thought-out like gift towards the district.
Yes, and I would say as far as how that was designated, in the action item it is reading about seed money, if you will, for a school store for positive behavior at Proviso East. I don't know when that idea came about in the delivery of our, that donation versus when it was designed for this. So I'm looking over at Principal Hall, but.
Can I be told later?
If it's, if we redo this, maybe we pull it for tonight and we simply redo it where it's a gift to Proviso East in the amount of ten thousand dollars. But to attach it to a specific employee and.
A specific employee.
I'm looking at the action item in my board book and it specifically let names an employee in here.
Mrs. Hobbs' name here.
Yeah.
Yeah, my understanding is that it's not going to Cory Hobbs, that she was.
No, I'm not saying that. But I'm saying it ties it to that person, which means a change in job duties. Is it currently in her job responsibilities to run a spirit store? And then in that case, we're letting an outside entity to tell us what our employees should be doing. And then that's where we have an issue.
That's why I'm asking you questions now before we get.
Yeah.
So that we can flesh some of that.
There's no hating, I don't.
I don't know that Cory Hobbs' name was attached to running it. I don't know how it ended in the board, I was presenting in the board room. It was a donation to the school for a spirit store, that it was. But if it's removing the designation for the spirit store and just for the donations to the school, I don't think that that will be a problem for the District Eighty-Nine Education community to make that change.
Have you already received this money?
No.
Okay, so it hasn't been made yet?
No, there's been no donation.
Okay.
I need to make a correction in that note. Ms. Hobbs did bring the check to the business office and it's in the business office in the same pending board approval.
Oh, okay, so it hasn't even been accepted, huh?
We can't accept it.
But I watched you, Ms. Grant, accept a mock check here before it was approved.
Excuse me?
I watched you accept a mock check before it was approved.
Was it over or under two thousand?
Before it was approved, the matter. The fact of the matter is, if we're giving to our children and you guys come here with this petty ante, heated hated behavior, that's unacceptable. I mean, they, he has said, I want to, I have sat here and watched you guys do things that should not be done, but all of a sudden you have someone that donate ten thousand dollars to our students. It's time to move adults out the way. The money is for students. It's not to put in your pocket, my pocket, or anyone else's pocket. But because you have a personal issue with Cory Hobbs, let's call it what it is, you're going to talk about it. At the end of the day, you accepted a mock check right here on this floor. It had not been accepted by the board.
And haven't you been on the board since?
I've been on here two times.
That's right. And I've watched you give the board the address.
I remember I got the panel to tell them a little talking. What?
My turn or?
No, man.
Go ahead, give me a two turn. It's about policies.
Go ahead, man.
Man, every accusation is like self-improvementation for her, swear to God. We have policies, and I know that some people like to try out policies when it benefits them or go against policies when they feel like they need that. But the truth is, our policy does say that if there's a gift, it can't have essentially strings attached. Ten thousand dollars is a great gift. If you want to give it to our kids, great, let's accept that money. But at the end of the day, we have to be the ones who decides what's best for our kids and how best to use it. A spirit store is a great idea. You know, when we look at the list of priorities of what our students need, how high is that on our list? Are there other things? You know, if we look at the mission of the district, hang on, I'm talking, please, thank you. If we're looking at the District Eighty-Nine Education Foundation, the mission of that education foundation is to encourage kids to become teachers. Is there not a better way we could use that ten thousand dollars and encourage our students to want to go into the education field? I mean, a spirit store is great, but how does it fit in with, one, what our kids need? And two, what the foundation it's coming for says it's for? We have to be true to both of those things, right? We have to be good receivers of this money, good stewards of it, you know, if and when it gets here. So we're talking about what the mission of the District Eighty-Nine Education Foundation is, to grow teachers, and that's something we've talked about a long time from here. We've talked about how to get our students to want to teach, maybe, you know, something along with their diploma that says, hey, if you go out and get a teaching degree and your certification in the state of Illinois, you'll have a job when you come back to Proviso, something like that. How do we grow teachers? And to that effect, you know, a spirit store is great, but is that what we need right now? And does that hold true to that mission of that foundation? We do need more teachers here. We've talked about needing more diverse teachers. We want people who are in our community to stay in our community and get those degrees and come back and share their story with students and bring up the next generation. Shouldn't we be using it for that? If you want to give a gift to our kids, I'm, I'll come out with a rake and I'll rake that money up. That's great, but we, as a district, have to be the ones who can best decide how to spend that and be true to what we want and our goals that we have for our students and the goals that our students have for themselves. And if it's growing teachers, then let's figure out how to use the money for that. Thank you.
I'll just add on that my concern is that this is a donation that would cover the initial costs, but there's no plan. The principal, the superintendent isn't aware of this. So then how do we identify a funding source to keep this going once that donation money runs out? So we're going to set this up, we're going to employ people, and then how do we keep it going, right? So I feel like there needs to be a plan in place, there needs to be a funding source identified for once this money runs out. If we're going to do a new initiative, right, and donations can't drive initiatives. I think it's, I like the idea, right? I think it's great, but it needs a plan in place. And then it needs to come, and gifts do need to be.
And then it needs to come, and gifts do need to be donated out of the goodwill of their heart for our students without strings attached. That's in our policy.
So then I'm clear, are we turning down ten thousand dollars?
No, I think we're. I think I, I mean, I would just like to see a rewrite of the action item. We can accept it, but let's.
I think it has to be in accordance with our policy to accept it.
Yeah, we just table it and then just take it back and talk to whoever, I think with Lorenzo right now. Talk to him. Just don't know what policy is and how to, you know, rewrite it or we do. And have an action plan again, say if we're going to start this.
They own the board of directors and also follow the policy.
Yeah, take around only pitch of the materials, I mean, you got to keep it going, right? For how long, I mean? It's a great idea, but.
My bill was that the store was replenished and supported itself with restocking the items.
So it's like a break even, so students are paying for these items?
So it is getting the store started. Once we do that and get the store started, then whatever proceeds were made from, you know, any items that were sold versus the ones that kids got from PBIS, be reinvested into the store.
Maybe that's what.
It wasn't the thing where it's.
And I'd love to see, but then I think that plan has to come from the administration right now from a donor.
I didn't know what was put in the board book, but that was mine.
Let's understand, well, yeah, maybe we could just have a plan of action and how it's going to be funded and how it's going to be, how it's going to work and what it's going to run. Be honest, it's a great idea, like your kids love.
I just want to say, let me say something, they all spoke. I want to thank Mr. Nathaniel Booker and District Eighty-Nine Foundation for even thinking enough of our kids at the high school level because they didn't have to. To come up with all this foolishness about who worked in the store, who run the store. Mr. Hall is the principal that we assigned to Proviso East High School. Mr. Hall has the autonomy to run these buildings. But it seems like it means that the board's going to tell them how to run it, what to do, how to do it. All of a sudden, we're going on policies when I watch policy be broken. But again, I think you need Nathaniel Booker wherever you may be for taking the time. But we've not had that happen in the history of two oh nine, or eighty-nine, is donating money from a foundation. And so now they want to tell you how it's going to go. I think we need to grow up. When I seen Cory Hobbs' name for employee, she's just an employee. I knew where this was headed. It's not about who you like, personalities. That lady comes here and she do, she do an exceptional job as a parent engagement community specialist representative. And to play these kind of games, it's unacceptable. You can move forward.
Yeah, just to make a correction, Nathaniel Booker did donate that, but he did think Norma Hernandez, Sofico, Mayor Katrina.
Yeah.
Saw that, there were several people that donated, which is not done.
But we don't want me.
Anyway, go ahead, Mr. Josh.
The last two information items are coming from operations and asking Mr. Taylor to come up to speak to those last two information items.
Good evening, board and community. This evening for your consideration, we have two information items. We're going to start with the transportation. So transportation for evening school has been going really great. And I want to jump on the bandwagon and say that Dr. Thomas does a phenomenal job, actually, on early mornings, late nights, and weekends to make sure that this program is successful. And we want to provide the best outcome for the students, which is roughly forty students throughout the community. This transportation starts from about two forty-five to three P M. in the evening and it concludes around seven forty-five to eight o'clock with students being dropped off back at home. This is an information item and we're hoping to bring it to an action item next month in your board packet. They're supporting documentation for BIs and bidders in the process. So please review those, any questions that you may have, shoot them over to the superintendent's office. I'll make sure I'll be ready next month to answer them. Any questions about the information item for transportation? All right, moving on to the information item for the Proviso West main gym roof. Over the last decade or so, that roof has been way out of its useful life and we finally found money for it. So thanks to Dr. Hill and her team, the BIs did come in very favorable to Proviso related to the professional estimates we were paying. So if you will take a look on your board pack and if you have any questions about the potential winning bidder for next month, I'd be more than happy to be ready for answering the questions. Any questions about it?
Yeah, just really quick, so the action item will come next month? And then do you know when we might be able to start construction or that has to wait until summer?
Great question, yeah, we do need to wait until summer because once you rip that roof off, we want to be very careful that nothing comes through the ceiling and negatively impacts who is in the building and the main gym. We do plan to kick this off on or around June one, right after school ends, around May twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth or so. But there is one caveat to this that we are trying to work out with the potential winning bidders is that the roofing union is up for renegotiations May thirtieth, so we're making sure that we're going to have a solid contract. So if there's a strike, that we are protected, so. Thanks for bringing that up.
Just one more question, so you're talking about the, over the gym, you're talking about the big gym, the holiday tournament gym. So we'll take precautions to protect the floor and the nice seats because inside is very, very nice. The roof may be bad, but what's underneath is really good.
We just reed it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the trade contractors in the bid documents has been cited to protect any internal components within the gymnasium, the pool, locker rooms, and the corridors. So we are protected. If something happens, there are insurance we'll take care of it.
Thank you.
I have two questions, just a reminder, we haven't had a facilities meeting for a while. So this is, the money's came from the emergency funds.
Working cash.
Two million dollars.
Yes, so over the years, we have built up the working cash fund. Where we at the point, as long as this was approved with the new life safety plan by ISD, we're allowed to use those funds.
Second question, are we signing out the bids? We, I mean, when I say we, the district, you and whoever helps you, or is it Gilbain?
For the roofing, we did need a design from the design team, purpose of will. Gilbain organized the trade contractor meetings, scope review meetings before the bid actually was concluded to be open. That was about eight days after it was in the newspaper. We met over at Proviso West High School, we answered our questions. There was a few R and F's related to scattalights because we do plan to replace the scattalights in that area. So we use Gilbain and purpose of will for the design. We're going to use Gilbain to help manage the project and also secure the project related to liability over the summer if it's approved next month.
And we do have an engineer's estimate just to kind of know if the lowest responsible bidder is awarded. Do we have a engineer's?
We do, and that bid was two point eight million dollars. And I want to say in your packet, the lowest responsible bidder is around one point five. So it's a very favorable number back to the district. So kudos to Gilbain for putting out on proper timing and purpose of will, nailing the scope. We're just hoping that at the final scope review, that there's no surprises and obviously come late May, no strike.
That's my next question, is do you check with the contractor because one point five versus two point eight is almost one third, so, I mean, twenty-five percent.
Yeah, so we will make sure we dive into those documents and count every nail and every screw and make sure that the bid is holistic. One thing I have to say, please remember, Proviso West roof is over thirty years old. So once we take that insulation off, we don't know what that decking is going to look like. We don't have that tray vision, so if we do have some changes on the project, there will be a ten percent allowance. And that's where we're pulled from, that's how much dollars will be around two, two hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. That concludes the interim superintendent's report. Thank you, board.
Thank you, so now the president's report, short and sweet. So first of all, I want to start off by thanking our administrators at every school. When I ran, I mean, this hasn't happened since I've been here, so I'm very proud of the district. I'm invested in the district. I graduated from the district, my kids come to the district. I have one more kid at least that graduated in twenty twenty-eight. So I'm very proud of all the administrators, the staff, especially doing all this hard work. And nothing against, you know, having interim superintendents, but with everything that's been going on for the past year, right? It's difficult and it takes a team effort to actually accomplish this while we have all these different color anomalies, right? You know, we're doing good. We don't have a superintendent, Mr. Ashoff, Mr. Pavone did a great job, they're doing a great job. So, you know, kudos to the principals, to the assistant principals, to the staff, the teachers. Because some ways or somehow we got to this point, something that we've never done in this, you know, with these circumstances. So it's something to think about and I could just say we're blessed pretty much. We're blessed to receive all these good news, even Proviso West winning, was it third place out of seventy-five schools in the machine dance manufacturing? So this is all great news, you know, so it's awesome news. With that being said, I want to just thank everybody, the staff, everybody, just the teachers, the whole D two oh nine, the students, because you know, it takes, the students got to do good too, right? You can only teach, but they got to learn and pass the test so you guys can get those good grades to, you know, be above and beyond what the state requires. So thanks to everyone. With that being said, I want to, I think James just told me that we need to assign a delegate to the general assembly for the upcoming conference that's coming up. I'm not going, but I believe Jenny, Della, and Sandra are going, so I just wanted to see if there's anybody. And do we have to vote on the special meeting for the delegate?
First of all, Ms. Harbinan gets the credit for bringing it to our attention. She's the one who raised the issue. Some districts will, some boards will vote on this. I would, I will point out to the board that Proviso's a little unique. You, in board policy, maybe the understatement of the century. Your board policy vests authority in Mr. Valtierras to make all committee appointments without board action. This is not quite a committee, but it seems to be in line with that authority that he can make this, that appointment. I will say that we do not have an action item that would allow the board to vote on this. So we're really left with Mr. Valtierras making that appointment. And there's only three of them that are going, so there's only three.
That being said, I just want to go down the line and see who wants to be it. And if they all want to be, then I, I don't know.
So the I A S, I A S D, Delta Assembly Annual Business Meeting is going to be hosted on eleven twenty-three, twenty twenty-four during the conference. It's ten thirty to twelve, so if you don't have a scheduled session, that would be helpful. I just, I know when I was there last year, they called, they made a big deal about it and we didn't have one. So I think it's important that we should have one. And it doesn't have to be me, but I think one of the three of us who are there should attend.
So if there's anybody that wants to nominate themselves, please let me know.
Sam, let me, let me.
Yeah, go ahead.
I will not do that, I'm paying for myself, so the district is not paying for me, so between these two. I will be attending the conference on my own merit and my own cash.
Okay, nice to know.
I don't have a preference, if Sandra wants it, or Mrs. Dixon wants to do that, I don't think. What day, Saturday? It's a Saturday. From ten thirty to twelve. Yeah, okay, I'll take it.
Okay, Sandra is, thank you. Thanks, ladies. All right, thank you. I wrote this on my notes, but I would like to thank Dr. Hall for, you know, it really takes, it doesn't take a year to actually do what was done here at Proviso, right? But, you know, some of us sow and others reap, right? And in this case, Dr. Hall reaped, you know, the good work that the district has done with Mr. Ashoff, even Dr. Henderson going back, you know, three years, even Dr. Rodriguez. Because we put that base in line, Dr. Hardy, right, with the, he really transformed the school when it came to fighting. The fighting stopped when he came. So it's really, you know, the work in progress throughout the years and Mr. Hall just happened to reap the benefits, which is good because he also did a lot of the work through this past year, this past few years. So I want to thank him and his team, his teachers, his staff, the whole school, right, for being able to accomplish this because it's the first time that, you know, this is something that a board member wants, right, to sit here and kind of brag and say, yeah, when I was there, you know, the schools became, not that I did, I think, you know, it takes a team effort, right? But it just feels good on the inside when your school, I graduated from Proviso East, it's commendable, right? Something that's never been done since twenty eighteen. And since I've been here, as a board member, I was here from people, oh, that school's terrible. I'm like, no, it's a great school. I mean, you just really got to go there and see. And with this status, I think that we could change that, or we could change that concept. I know it's a lie, I know, I've been there, my sons, I have two sons that graduated from there, one is attending there now. And it's a great school. And I just want to thank Mr. Hall, his administration, teachers, the whole building for making this a commendable school. Not saying anything less about West or P M S A, but it's just something that comes here to, you know, comes close to my heart because I went to Proviso and I saw the struggles that they've been having since I became a board member. It's a big accomplishment. So thank you, Dr. Hall, I can't tell him, Dr. Hobbs, but it's Mr. Hall. Thank you, Mr. Hall, Ms. McIntosh, Ms. Garcia, you know, all the administrators, I don't know them all, but thank you, teachers, staff, students, everyone. Thank you, it makes me so proud to be part of that school that's not commendable. So thank you, Mr. Hall. Also want to take the time to thank Mr., you have a new superintendent starting in December, but I want to thank Mr. Asher, Mr. Pavone, and all the administrators of the fifth floor. Dr. Hill's doing a great job with finance for getting this through this, you know, through this process, right? Thank you all for everything you guys have done and you did an excellent job. You learned while you were on the job, you know, you excelled and you used your expertise and your talents and it was for good. Thank you very much for that. I know I don't say it often, but thank you, Dr. Hill, Mr. Asher, Mr. Pavone, Bill, James, you too, yeah. Thank you, everyone, for the excellent hard work. With that being said, you know, we have a new superintendent starting in December and I know not all of us voted for him. And, you know, sometimes we have to give more than we want to give and we see less than we want to receive. I think that we're one board, right? I remember voting the teachers' union contract down, not because that was in agreement, but I wasn't really paying attention to it, I wasn't there. I voted it down, but as the president, I had to sign it. I had to sign it to make it valid, right? So that just reminds me that we're just one board, right? I might be the president, but I'm just one board. When they talk about the board, they're talking about everyone, right? So I asked you, you support the superintendent, I mean, give him the support and, 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 you know, he's for the students. Give him the support, give him a chance, give him the opportunity, right? We've given a lot of people here an opportunity now that we needed it and we saw that they did great. So we don't know what to expect, but we provide that opportunity and provide that support. Because at the end of the day, we're really providing support for our students, not for the superintendent. We just help the superintendent give that support to our students. But it is really up to us as a board to support him and let's see what he got, you know, let's see what ideas he has, what initiatives he has, what heart he has, right? What intentions he has. And let's support him, give him an opportunity, you know, give him six months, a year, I'm not running again, so. Just give him an opportunity to excel, right? We all want an opportunity, right? He's come in a difficult situation for four zero and it's going to be tough for him, so give him an opportunity, like if you will give yourself an opportunity when you walk into a place that maybe not everybody likes you, but you happen to be there, right? Just give him the opportunity you will want to have if that was. Just give him the opportunity you will want to have, if that was you, because we all been there. We all have been in places where we're not liked, or people don't like us, or they think we're gonna underperform, or whatever reason, just give him the opportunity. We won't not know what he could do until you let him work, right? So with that being said, that's the president's report. That is all, thank you very much. Great, thank you. So, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held on October eighth, twenty twenty-four? Second. Jennifer, call it on.
Mr. Alexander, absent, Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson? Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Valtierras?
Aye.
Ms. Barbanen?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I have a motion to approve the bill list submitted to the board and dated November twelfth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of three million, five hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and thirteen point fifty. Jennifer, please call it on.
Mr. Alexander, absent, Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson? Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Valtierras?
Aye.
Ms. Barbanen? Aye. Motion carried.
May I have a motion to approve the consistent agenda to include the following agreements and expenditures? The D M I Maya Community Project, agreement with P T U regarding Ingenuity Program, agreement with P T U regarding Photography Club Stipends, Final Site Renewal, Advanced Placement African-American Study Course, Career Exploration Course.
So moved, second.
Jennifer, please call it on.
Mr. Alexander, absent, Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Valtierras?
Aye.
Ms. Barbanen? Aye. Motion carried.
Item fifteen, I guess, we're on table, can I have a motion to table item fifteen, District Eighty-Nine Education Foundation donation?
So moved.
Jennifer, please call it on.
Mr. Alexander, absent, Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Nay.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Valtierras?
Aye.
Ms. Barbanen? Aye. Motion carried to table.
I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the twenty twenty-four certificate of tax levy in the amount of seventy-five thousand, um, seventy-five million, sorry, do it again, seventy-five million, nine hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred ninety-six, as presented.
So moved, second.
Jennifer, please call it on.
Discussion.
Discussion, yes.
So, the, you said as discuss, and then you said seventy-five million, but your, the public on the agenda, it says seven hundred and forty-five million. Why aren't they correct in that?
It doesn't say it on the agenda.
It, it's listed for the public.
The action item.
Yeah, the action item, it listed seven hundred, seven, seven hundred and forty-five million.
The board resolution with the certificate of tax levy attached to it as Exhibit A has the correct amount. It was just the, what is it? The administrator's action item memo that had the typo in it? So the board resolution with the certificate of tax levy attachment was all correct, that was all in the board packet as well. And, and it's the motion that's being called that controls all of this legally. I understand what you're saying, the public...
The public see one thing, maybe doing something else, absolutely.
The motion is appropriate tonight, yeah.
Um, my other concern is, I noticed that it said your taxes would go up fifty-eight dollars, four dollars, two dollars is too much for taxes in this community. You guys can move right along.
So just to add to that, I am checking the certificate of tax levy, it is, does match, it is seventy-five million, nine thirty-four, eight ninety-six. Jennifer, please call it on.
Mr. Alexander, absent, Mrs. Hickson?
Nay.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Nay.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Valtierras?
Aye.
Ms. Barbanen? Aye. Motion carried.
May I have a motion to adopt a policy amendments or recommendations of no amendments to the board policy two seventy, two one twenty-five, four eighty, five two hundred, six one forty, two one sixty, four one five, five one eighty, five two ninety, five three ten, six one ten, six one fifty, seven one seventy, two two sixty, five one hundred, seven one eighty-five, two two sixty-five, as presented to the board.
One correction, it was five one hundred, seven twenty, and seven one eighty-five.
Say that again.
Five one hundred, seven twenty, seven one eighty-five.
Ah, correct, yes, thank you, Jenny. Seven twenty, five one hundred, seven twenty, seven one eighty-five, and two two sixty-five, as presented to the board. Jennifer, please call, oh, motion on the floor, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
And just to clarify, we are going on item eighteen, we skipped seventeen. So we'll go back to seventeen.
Thank you, Jenny, this is the second.
Mr. Alexander, absent, Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Nay.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Valtierras?
Aye.
Ms. Barbanen? Aye. Motion carried. Now seventeen.
Thank you, Jenny. May I have a motion to increase the total number of minimum credits required for graduation at Proviso East and Proviso West High School from twenty twenty-two to twenty, I'm sorry, from twenty-two to twenty-three, to be first affected for graduating classes in twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine school year, as presented.
So moved, second.
Jennifer, please call it on.
Mr. Alexander, absent, Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson? Aye. Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Valtierras?
Aye.
Ms. Barbanen? Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the November twelfth, twenty twenty-four personnel report including the hiring, resignations, separations, stipend positions, and leaves of absences?
So moved.
Second. Jennifer, please call it on.
Mr. Alexander, absent, Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Valtierras?
Aye.
Ms. Barbanen? Aye. Motion carried.
Jennifer, can you please read the FOIA report?
Uh, date received, October fourth, twenty twenty-four, at three seventeen P M., Carissa Gillespie requested all affidavits, investigation notes submitted on, submitted or involving twenty twenty-two, November through December, suspension and investigation, included all emails and inter-office communications regarding the suspension, that includes involved names of Board of Education members, James Henderson, Scott Hadala, Gleason, the school attorney, and Howard Ray. The status is response provided. On October tenth, twenty twenty-four, at four oh two P M., Bob Akerson, Conica Minolta, Business Solutions, Bob Akerson from Conica Minolta Business Solutions, requested the original current contracts for copier, printer, and high-volume production print equipment print shop that details the following information: model cost per copyright, color cost per copyright, the term of the maintenance contract in months, monthly lease cost, and whether the monthly lease cost represents a one dollar buyout or fair market value lease, and the term of the lease contract in months. The response was provided. On October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, six forty-seven A M., Marie Campbell requested information on portable toilet rental that the school district rented on nine one twenty-twenty-three through ten one twenty-twenty-four. Please include invoices. That response is in process. On October eleventh, twenty twenty-four, one fourteen P M., Jennifer La Bash signed affidavits from October twenty twenty-two of L T Taylor and Howard Ray in regards to investigation of alleged board violations pertaining to posters being found in the classroom of Danielle English, Carissa Gillespie, Nicole O'Connor, and Jenny La Bash. That response was provided. October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, twelve forty-five, Jennifer La Bash requested all email, text, and handwritten communications, including photos sent, written, taken by L T Taylor and Howard Ray in regards to allegations of violated board policies pertaining to posters allegedly found in the rooms of Jenny La Bash, Carissa Gillespie, Danielle English, and Nicole O'Connor. That status is in process. October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, at eight eighteen A M., Cory Christensen requested the gross expenditures total for fiscal years twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, for several account numbers, the gross total, the charges, late fees incurred, and interest paid on district credit cards for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. That response was provided. October twelfth, twenty twenty-four, Elisa Smith McGee requested, one, school Proviso West and, sorry, Proviso East and West, parent coordinators and how they were funded for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and twenty twenty-four, and two, district parent PAC funding from twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three, all financial funding records, participants, jobs, job descriptions, and all salaries or payments to individuals or groups involving, involving PAC funds. That response was provided. And the last FOIA was from November seventh, twenty twenty-four, from Elisa Smith McGee. This is a request for the employment records of parent coordinators at East and West, including applications, resumes, as well as salaries and benefits received. This request is in process, and that concludes the FOIA report.
All business? No business?
We have no business. I wanna give a shout out to Dr. Keisha Lane, who obtained her doctoral degree. I wanna thank the students, former students, I don't know if they're current high school students, um, they're coming out and being a part of tonight, and thank you, Dr. Thomas, for doing what you do, and just keep doing what you're doing. Yeah, that's it.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Thomas, thanks so much. Any old business, small business? New business? Wow, I'm thirty. Here and now, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So, on favor?
Aye.